Come to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Session for Thursday, August 12, 2021. It is 9:03 a.m. My name is Time Answer Chair of the Board. Zoomed in is Commissioner Carolina Mejia. In our boardroom is the County Manager, Ramiro Chavez. Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell is here. We have our Director of Community Planning and Economic Development, Josh Cummings. Leah Davis, who's one of our planners, Associate Planner with CPED Department. And I see Brad Medred from the City of Tomwater here joining us, as well as Maya Tippel, Senior Planner with Community Planning and Economic Development. I think that's the roundups that I see. Anybody else expected, Ramiro?
I'm expecting Commissioner Edwards to join us here in a minute.
Okay. All right. But there's nobody else in terms of the information and presentation that we need to wait for?
No, I don't believe so. I think we have the team ready to kick it in.
Okay, great. The public can follow along this meeting through our Thurston County YouTube channel. We're slated to go until 10 a.m. So with that, who do I'm turning this over to? To Josh or...? Okay, Josh?
Great, thank you. Yes. Thanks, Commissioner. Joshua Cummings, the Director of Community Planning and Economic Development. I'm going to go off camera here in a little bit, but I just, the team's got it. But I wanted to take a quick minute to just express my appreciation to the City of Tomwater and to the CPED staff who's kept this topic on track despite, obviously, a global pandemic. We started having these conversations on the joint plans 2019 in earnest at TRPC as the setting with direction from the Board of County Commissioners to get these things moving, to align the plans between the county and the cities within the UGAs. And I really appreciate the work and the effort that's gone into this. Tomwater being the first that you'll see coming to the Board of County Commissioners, but there will be more. So I just wanted to, while Brad was on the line, we've got Leah and Maya here, just wanted to say thank you for your hard work. And to the Board of County Commissioners, thank you for your direction. So what you'll hear today is another step in the product that the teams have been working on, which is their alignment between our jurisdictions. Other than that, I will go offline and let the smart people take it away.
Good morning, Commissioners. Leah Davis with Community Planning. So as you know, Brad Medred from the City of Tomwater has joined us today. He will help answer questions and guide the discussion. He's extremely knowledgeable and experienced and has good historical knowledge on the joint planning. I also want to thank him for his contribution to the presentation and the materials today. So I would like to share my screen. I'll give that a whirl. If I have permissions, I do. Okay. So I have a PowerPoint presentation to give you kind of an overview of the Tomwater Joint Plan. Let's see here. This is our agenda for the day. Here are the items we'll be covering: the purpose of the briefing specifically, and then the purpose of the joint plan, the history of the joint planning with Tomwater, the status of this update. We'll take a quick look at the current conditions and forecasts. We will talk about some more in-depth, proposed updates in the joint plan, and then the next steps to achieve our goals. So the purpose of this briefing is to provide information about the Tomwater Joint Plan, share the recommendations by the two planning commissions, the recommendation by the City Council, and provide an opportunity for the Board to ask any questions they might have about the joint plan. So the purpose of the joint plan is to, well, it's a hybrid of the Tomwater and Thurston County Comprehensive Plans. It will help shape the future of the growth in the urban growth area, and it provides a framework for creating the development code that is an important piece of joint planning with the City of Tomwater. It provides transparency and predictability to the citizens of the urban growth area because they will probably one day be annexed into the city. And so it helps with a more seamless annexation. It gives them an opportunity to make decisions about their properties prior to annexation because the codes will be more in alignment. And then, along with the comp plan, it does update the development codes. This is the first update in over 25 years. And we will take a look at also the population forecast and the Buildable Lands Report as a piece of this presentation. So Tomwater and Thurston County began in the 1980s with a memorandum of understanding to commit to joint planning. In 1995, the first joint plan was adopted for the urban growth area. And that agreement is a very important document, and it requires the county and the city to have regular updates to the comp plan as well as the development code. And there's been only one minor update to the joint plan, and that was in 2009. And the Growth Management Act does require that we follow countywide planning policies for modifying the urban growth area, modifying the process for planning in the urban growth area. So we'll have a summary of the joint plan. The City of Tomwater completed its comp plan in 2016, and about that time, the county and the city began working on the joint plan. It was fairly intermittent. And then in 2020, the Board directed staff to make the joint planning a priority with adoption of this joint plan in 2021. So the primary goals of this update are to address the current conditions and current interests of the community, the people who live in the urban growth area, and align the comp plans as well as the development code. And then we'll also meet state requirements if we get this update adopted. The joint plan status of this time is that we had two, not two, we actually had three joint planning commission work sessions in the spring. And on May 20, we had a public hearing, and each planning commission, the City of Tomwater Planning Commission, the Thurston County Planning Commission, provided two separate recommendations. The Thurston County Planning Commission recommended adoption of the joint plan with one section stricken. And then the Tomwater Planning Commission recommended adopting the joint plan as proposed. After the public hearing of the planning commission, the City of Tomwater had their briefings, and on August 2, they signed a resolution to unanimously approve recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners to adopt the joint plan as proposed. And that should be an attachment in your materials packet. So we'll have an overview of the joint plan this morning. I'll show you a map of the joint planning area, also known as the UGA. We'll have a quick look at the population forecast, the buildable land supply and demand forecast. And then we'll have some more information about the goals and policies in the land use section. So this is the map of the urban growth area. The beige areas are the UGA that kind of surround the city. It has reduced in size since we first started the joint planning in 1995. A lot of that is because big sections of it have been annexed into the city. But one section was removed because there were high groundwater hazards, and it wasn't appropriate for high intensity development. So it's now down to about 2,800 acres. The population forecast from the Buildable Lands Report, it shows that we will have a significant increase in the next 20 years. The biggest growth will occur in the urban growth area, as you can see. And the population demographic will get younger, a little bit younger through the next 20 years. This is information taken from the Buildable Lands Report that was published by TRPC this year. It doesn't separate out the UGA and the City of Tomwater. It lumps them together, but it does show that we will have the capacity for residential housing supply and demand up until 2040. It also shows the same for industrial and commercial uses. We should be good to go if things stay on the same trajectory. So we'll also talk about land use policy in the joint plan. The land use element is the largest section of the joint plan. It has the most proposed changes because it is outdated. The goals and policies in the joint plan will help coordinate with other cities and countywide planning policies, and they help define the action for implementing the joint plan in the Tomwater UGA. These are the more major changes in Chapter 3, the land use element. And it's about looking into the future and protecting what we have. It does require considering infrastructure for connection to water and sewer in the UGA as those services become available. It does ask us to consider transportation as we do land use planning and directing where different types of zoning designations go. It asks us to manage and protect groundwater, preserve critical areas and open spaces, and encourage the types of development that are best put along commercial, are on transportation corridors such as commercial and industrial. And finally, it does help protect the Olympia Regional Airport. We'll have a closer look at all of those things. These are sections of the joint plan that don't have any or just have minor changes. Those are lands for public purposes, you know, maybe sewage treatment plants, prisons, things like that, making sure there's a place for utilities, making sure our housing needs are met, and making sure we protect parks, rec and open spaces, and provide economic development, make sure we're coordinating with public works and transportation and public facilities and services. So along with this updated joint plan, we've included six zoning amendments. Five of them are actual rezoning designations, and one is to expand the airport hazard overlay zone. We'll look at each of those more closely. The first one is a little over 2 acres at the, near the intersection of Black Lake Belmore Road and 49th. This property that's outlined in red is currently zoned neighborhood commercial. Just north of there is some neighborhood commercial development, but this piece of property hasn't been, there's been no permitting request to develop any neighborhood commercial there. It's currently a single-family use. And so we're just proposing a little over 2 acres be rezoned to single-family medium density. This is a larger parcel that is currently zoned neighborhood commercial. It is a little over 20 acres near Center Street and 83rd Avenue Southwest. We're proposing to rezone that to general commercial, which is more in alignment with the uses that are currently going on on that, on those parcels there. There's an area, a little over 22 acres at the intersection of 73rd and Little Rock Road. It's currently residential use. This is the, it's used as residential, but it's zoned commercial development. This is the last area that has that zoning designation, and we'd like to just clean up the code and the joint plan by eliminating that commercial development zoning designation. The city has requested that we rezone this to mixed use. So in the future, as this area experiences, and it already is experiencing more high-density development, mixed use would be a more appropriate use along there than commercial development. This is a big undeveloped parcel along Interstate 5 and near 85th Avenue Southwest, currently zoned business park. It's the last parcel with the business park zoning, again, cleaning up the comprehensive joint plan and the development code, eliminating the business park, and changing it to light industrial to match the areas to the south. This is a citizen-initiated proposal zoning amendment. There's open space that is the green area. That's the Deschutes River, and on the west side of that are some high bluffs. And that area is protected as open space. The small area, less than an acre there, the line should be following the top of that bluff, and it was just a mapping error, and it was made straight across there. And the owner of the enclave at the Deschutes River has asked that we include that in the single-family low-density. It would not change any critical area setbacks for the steep slope or the Deschutes River, but it would change the zoning of that.
Leah, before you leave that, I don't quite understand when you said "that line."
Well, see how the straight line goes on the left side, and it's not following the green line. So there was a mapping error, and the open space should have followed the top of the bluff above the Deschutes River. And instead, it was just made straight across there from this point to this point, and it should have followed the top of the bluff here. So currently, this whole section right in here is zoned open space, and it should be single-family low-density.
Got it. Thank you.
Uh-huh. This is the airport hazard overlay zone. It's quite a large area of the county. There's a tiny section, tiny strip here at the south of that yellow section that is in the urban growth area. That is zoned light industrial. This bigger area is the rural county, and it is all zoned residential, one dwelling per 10 acres. And we'll go into that a little more in depth. So the RCW does require jurisdictions with airports to protect them and discourage inappropriate development. I want to be clear that the airport hazard overlay doesn't change any of the underlying zoning, and that would be the light industrial and the R1 to 10. But all it does is protect the takeoff and landing area for safety reasons, for people on the ground as well as aviators into the future. So it would eliminate the possibility of high-intensity uses such as schools, hotels, multifamily housing, tall buildings, or uses that store flammable products. So basically, it wouldn't change any of the allowed uses on the ground as they are now. It just protects it into the future in case those lands were ever rezoned for safety reasons. And in effect, it would protect that rural area as a rural area. So there are code changes that go along with this because we're proposing that we repeal the commercial development at 73rd and Little Rock and the business park zoning at I-5 and 83rd, 85th. We'd have to repeal those two sections of code. That's also included in your materials packet. The planning commission recommendations, I'd like to recap those. So the Thurston County Planning Commission recommended approving the Tomwater Joint Plan, all six land use amendments, and the airport hazard overlay, and the correlating Thurston County codes for the two repealed zoning designations. But they did also recommend that we strike Section 11.1.6, which is the recommendations to the changes of Thurston County Code, to be in alignment with the Tomwater City Code. The Tomwater Planning Commission recommended approval of the joint plan as is. And then we did get a recommendation on August 2 from the Tomwater City Council. After their work sessions, they did submit a letter of recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners unanimously recommending that we approve the joint plan as proposed. There are next steps that have to be taken to achieve our goal of getting the joint plan updated this year. If needed, depending on the questions today, we could have another briefing on August 18. That's tentatively scheduled if it's needed. If there is no information after today's briefing, the Board could direct staff to set a date for a public hearing. And then we'd like to include this joint plan in the November-December Comprehensive Plan Update. And that's my presentation. Brad and I are both here to answer questions. I think Maya, in case there are other questions, background questions that I don't have the answers to. So thank you.
Brad, anything you want to say upfront before I turn it to Commissioners' questions?
I would just like to again thank the county staff and Commissioners for having us today. This is a good thing to happen. We really appreciate the ability to work with county staff to get this moving forward.
Commissioner Mejia, go, start with you.
So I want to jump into a little, a deep, a little bit deeper into the thoughts of our planning commission and why there was kind of that difference, and why that section specifically. I mean, what were, what were the comments?
I think that they, they just didn't, weren't comfortable recommending that we adopt Tomwater's code at that point. And we did invite the planning commission chair to be here today, and he wasn't available. So maybe you could contact him or watch the video of the public hearing and the vote. There is some information there.
I'll ask a follow-up on that because I had the same question basically as Commissioner Mejia. I thought the point of the joint plan was to put the city and county codes into alignment. And your description of what Section 11.1.6 is about is, you said, alignment of codes. So I guess I'm, my understanding was if there's a, you know, there, sometimes there is a specific need because of a specific reason to make exceptions and not do that. But by and large, you do that in a joint planning process as a general proposition. And the way you described 11.1.6, you said, that's the part where the codes align. So I guess my question is, our planning commission in the, like, it wasn't about a specific sub-issue? They, as entirely, as a complete matter, did not want to align our building codes?
That's my understanding. They, I think that they felt like they didn't want the joint plan to make a recommendation for future decisions about, about development code. Maya, do you have something to add?
Yeah, I'll touch on that. And what Leah just said is spot-on. So the planning commission's discussion around this specifically was at the May 20 meeting after the public hearing. And basically, what that section does is it lists several sections of code that would need to be updated in order for the county code to align with the City of Tomwater code. And keep in mind that most of these code changes are going to be following this joint plan update. This is, this is just a list of the recommended code changes. But the Thurston County Planning Commission felt uncomfortable having a section in there that said blanket recommendation of all these codes that need to be changed in order for alignment. They felt more comfortable that each of these go through their own legislative process. So that when that, that section of the Thurston County Code comes to the planning commission and the Board for review, they can make their own recommendation at that time as opposed to the joint plan specifically saying recommended.
Well, how, I mean, we're working on these with Lacey and Olympia. I mean, how, and what's the, I mean, what's the common practice in terms of how something like this would be managed? Is it, is this out of line to list these sections of code and?
I don't think it's out of line. I think it's actually, because of the 25-plus years that this, since this joint plan has been updated, it's a comprehensive list of the areas where really the county has lagged behind in planning. And it's, it's a lot of things to be updated to be in alignment with the City of Tomwater. So far with my experience, Olympia and Lacey have not created a comprehensive list in their joint plan, but it's an excellent guide. And I want to be clear that even if we have that recommendation of those things in the comp plan or the joint plan, it doesn't mean that those codes get pushed through during the development code update. All of those things have their own hearings, their own decision-making process on top of this. So this is just a vision.
Like a checklist, sort of checklist, what are the pieces you want to look at individually?
Exactly. It's a guide.
Yeah. If I could explain further also, the, the purpose of the section, as Leah mentioned, was really, again, this is the list of the resolutions and ordinances the city has passed since the last time the joint plan was updated. That affected specifically the county's Title 22, the joint plan area. So we're looking at only zoning code-related issues. From the council's perspective, they see this as a fairly important recommendation to be considered as part of the joint plan because it really reinforces that this plan is intended to be a transition, to assist with the transition of this area, and that these recommendations really sort of are the foundation for further discussion and further approvals that are necessary to amend the county Title 22 for the Tomwater UGA.
Sorry, Commissioner, back to Commissioner Mejia, and then we'll go to Commissioner Edwards.
Um, no further questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards?
No, I think your discussion covered everything for me as well. So thank you.
Okay. Well, it sounds like the, between the Tomwater Council, the Thurston County Planning Commission, the Tomwater Planning Commission, everybody's in agreement with all the elements other than whether we include this checklist of code sections to look at in the future. So given that, what Maya is or Leah is the next step for the Board to, what do we need to do next?
Well, if you need more information, we could have a second briefing. If you don't need more information, you could direct staff to set a public hearing for the Board of County Commissioners to hold a public hearing prior to adoption.
Okay, Ramiro, is that what you would like us to do? the planning commission and the board for review, they can make their own recommendation at that time as opposed to the joint plan specifically saying recommended.
Well, how, I mean, we're working on these with Lacey and Olympia. I mean, how, what's the, I mean, what's the common practice in terms of how something like this would be managed? Is it, is this out of line to list these sections of code and?
I don't think it's out of line. I think it's actually, because of the 25-plus years that this, since this joint plan has been updated, it's a comprehensive list of the areas where really the county has lagged behind in planning. And it's a, it's a lot of things to be updated to be in alignment with the city of Tombwater. So far with my experience, Olympia and Lacey have not created a comprehensive list in their joint plan, but it's an excellent guide. And I want to be clear that even if we have that recommendation of those things in the comp plan or the joint plan, it doesn't mean that those codes get pushed through during the development code update. All of those things have their own hearings, their own decision-making process on top of this. So this is just a vision.
Like a checklist, sort of checklist, what are the pieces you want to look at individually?
Exactly, it's a guide.
Yeah. If I could explain further also, the, the purpose of the section, as Leah mentioned, was really, again, this is the list of the resolutions and ordinances the city has passed since the last time the joint plan was updated that affected specifically the county's Title 22, the joint plan area. So we're looking at only zoning code-related issues. From the council's perspective, they see this as a fairly important recommendation to be considered as part of the joint plan because it really reinforces that this plan is intended to be a transition, to assist with the transition of this area and that these recommendations really sort of are the foundation for further discussion and further approvals that are necessary to amend the county Title 22 for the Tombwater UGA.
Sorry, Commissioner, back to Commissioner Mejia and then we'll go to Commissioner Edwards.
No further questions at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Edwards.
No, I think your discussion covered everything for me as well, so thank you.
Okay. Well, it sounds like the, between the Tombwater Council, the Thurston County Planning Commission, the Tombwater Planning Commission, everybody's in agreement with all the elements other than whether we include this checklist of code sections to look at in the future. So given that, what Maya is or Leah is the next step for the board to, what do we need to do next?
Well, if you need more information, we could have a second briefing. If you don't need more information, you could direct staff to set a public hearing for the Board of County Commissioners to hold a public hearing prior to adoption.
Okay, Ramiro, is that what you would like us to do?
Well, I think the question remaining today before you, you consider asking staff to submit an AIS to set a public hearing is whether the board likes to entertain and agree with the Thurston County Planning Commission to eliminate this section. I think that's really a conversation you need to have at this point because setting the public hearing is going to be based on whether you include this section or you're not including this section during the public hearing process.
Well, since that's, I'll just weigh in myself, since that's the disputed element, if we don't include it, then we're not going to get any public comment on it unless somebody was really tracking the planning commission process.
I agree, so.
If we include it, then we can hear more comment on it and we can always take it, we can always follow our own planning commission, take it out if we don't like what we hear. But I would be inclined to include it so we get, we encourage the most comment about it since there seems to be a slight difference of opinion. I got Commissioner Mejia.
No, I agree with that.
Commissioner Edwards?
So I guess my question would be, will we have any discussion on this prior to setting the public hearing other than what we've had here in the last few minutes? I know, I think we're on for this afternoon, or no, we're on for another meeting with the three Commissioners coming up, I think. Could we make that decision then when we could talk about it just a little more?
Well, we have half an hour right now if you want it to get through it.
Okay, well, my concern was if we end up doing something, what I'm hearing, it doesn't sound like we're going to do something contrary to what the planning commission is recommending. We're just going to open it up for public comment on the whole process, including their recommendation or not. Is that right?
It seems like that's right.
Yeah, I will add to that, that the draft that is in the board's packet and the draft that we would move forward to public hearing very clearly denotes that section where and how there was a differing recommendation. So if the board chooses to leave that section in for a public hearing, it'll be clear to the public that that was the area of a differing recommendation.
Okay, then I'm fine with setting that hearing. If that's what you want to do now is set that date, is that where we're going, Chair?
No, sir. At this point, the, the decision will be to request a staff to bring an AIS for you to formally set a public hearing at an upcoming, work on a Commissioner's meeting.
Okay, okay, good enough, I'm with it.
Okay, great. Well, anything else then we need to cover? I'm very excited about this because if, as Leah outlined in her history, in 2020, the board put this as a higher priority to get these done and I feel partly responsible for that. So I take pride in that because this is something that I've heard from the municipalities needed to get done. So I think we're moving in a good direction and look forward to seeing that AIS. Josh, anything to wrap things up? Okay, very good. Thanks, everybody, for your time.
Thank you. And we'll cancel the next week's follow-up briefing since we don't need it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, good work.
Thank you.